Oh Randy, if you have that sticky.
Hey.
No pressure, we've been talking for grants.
Hey ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to call the Marion City Council regular session for Thursday, January nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-three to order. If you would, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Ms. Atkins?
Here.
Mr. Jensen?
Here.
Mr. Harper?
Here.
Mayor Abou Osley? Mr. Brandt?
Here.
Ms. Minzer?
Here.
Mr. Sterned?
Here.
A moment of silence? Thank you very much. Okay, first item of business this afternoon is a proclamation regarding Human Trafficking Prevention and Awareness Month, January two thousand and twenty-three. I've asked Council Member Sterned to read that, and I believe we have representatives here from Chains Interrupted, Mercy and St. Luke's. So Randy, go ahead.
Wonderful, thank you. I'll ask for anybody who would like to come forward with me while I read the proclamation, and I'll just have you come right over here, please. Thank you. So this is a proclamation, whereas human trafficking is the exploitation of a person through force, fraud, or coercion. It is found in the United States, most often in the form of sexual exploitation, forced labor, and debt bondage. And whereas one of the world's fastest growing crimes is the buying and selling of people, whose growth has been accelerated in recent years due to isolation, economic hardship, increase in abuse, and online activity. And whereas communities in eastern Iowa continue to see an increase in the number of people victimized, with Chains Interrupted serving over one hundred survivors in an area in two thousand and twenty-two. And whereas prosecutions for this horrific crime, which denies human dignity and freedom, and fuels organized crime, have decreased, only with three individuals being convicted in Iowa federal courts for human trafficking, and no convictions in Iowa's state appellate courts in two thousand and twenty-one. And whereas, even though awareness of this crime is growing, human trafficking continues to be missed and goes uninterrupted and unreported due to its isolating nature, the misunderstanding of its definition, and the mis-indigenous of its indicators. And whereas, every business, community organization, faith community, family, and individual can make a difference by working to protect the vulnerable within their sphere of influence by addressing the problem of internet track, excuse me, sex trafficking, pornography, and choosing products that are not made by forced labor, and by becoming more aware of the problem and possible solutions. And whereas, the city of Marion joins Chains Interrupted, Mercy Medical Center, and St. Luke's Hospital, in their dedication to providing community outreach and education, legislative advocacy, training, promotion of services to survivors of human trafficking, and the collaboration with law enforcement agencies. Now therefore, I, Randy Sterned, on behalf of Mayor Nicholas Abulosli, the mayor, excuse me, the mayor of Marion, Iowa, do hereby proclaim January two thousand and twenty-three as Human Trafficking Prevention and Awareness Month, and encourage all residents to become more informed on the growing problem, to be vigilant and report suspicious activity, and to work towards solutions to end trafficking in all of the forms in our community. If you see something that doesn't look right, reach out to Chains Interrupted at three one nine, three six four, zero two, two two, or the National Human Trafficking hotline at eight eight eight, three seven three, seven eight, eight eight. Thank you. You're very welcome. She's going to grab a phone.
Thank you.
You want to say a few words?
Yes.
Okay, help yourself.
Thank you. Thank you for doing this. Marion is my hometown. Graduated from Marion years ago. We won't talk about that number, but I just want to say thank you for making this important in Marion. The schools, the high school, the junior high, Lynnmar, I actually will be at Marion Homeschooling Association tomorrow night, presenting two presentations to, and it is open to the public, to both parents and children there. I would encourage you to learn something. It doesn't look like you expect it to. There's no such thing as a child prostitute. It is absolutely happening in our schools, and it's happening here. And I need you to pay attention and affect change for those, just those kids in your bubble. Being a safe place to land is the best thing you can do, right? Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you so much. An important issue that has become paramount in our society's actions. Okay, so we'll move on to public forum. This section is for comments from the public on topics listed on the agenda that are not associated with a public hearing. So if there's anybody here to address council, you can state your name and address, please. Would appreciate that.
My name is Ron Schmidt. I live at thirty-four nineteen thirty-fifth Avenue in Marion. I'm a resident and president of the Vills of Prairie Knowles condominium association. Our association includes residences of thirty, on thirty-fifth Avenue, Granger Avenue, Vaughn Avenue, and Thirty-Fifth Street, between Thirty-Fifth Avenue and Granger Avenue. Our neighborhood is populated by mostly retired individuals. I can say that on our street alone, we have seventeen elderly widows that live in their own homes. We have two problems, especially on Thirty-Fifth Avenue. Traffic has greatly increased since the opening of the new middle school on Thirty-Fifth Avenue. Parents rushing to get their children to school, and then rushing to get them home after school, have greatly increased the speed of vehicles driving on our street. That is why we are asking for some speed limit signs to be erected on our street. I'm a little puzzled by the information regarding the moving of one of our streetlights. That is not what we are asking for. We would like to see more streetlights in our area, since it's very dark at night, and with increased traffic, it's more dangerous. We may not, we may not have had an accident since twenty-twelve. Our circumstances have changed considerably since the opening of the new school. The moving of the streetlight to the intersection will make little difference in our overall problem we see in our neighborhood. I hope that you will consider our request for speed limit signs and additional streetlights. Thank you.
Anybody else to address council this afternoon?
Okay, I'm going to try not to be a volunteer this time. It's my whole goal. Amanda Madison, twenty-six ninety-eight East Robbins Road, and I am here to speak again on the annexation of our property. Unfortunately, since the last meeting, I did work with Kesha and Kim, and we had lots of conversations. There is no guarantees that I can continue as intended on my property. So that's a little heartbreaking. With that, there was some creative solutions and ideas proposed. All of them require me jumping through additional hoops, going to different boards, and asking for permissions, really, for things that I'm currently allowed to do on my property. Some of them resolved in some financial hardships for us, and at the end of the day, there's no guarantees that I can continue as intended with my property use. This annexation proposal unfortunately results in a taking from my family without a subsequent benefit to us. I don't know if it's within the council's power to consider providing us a different proposed zoning, so that I can continue with our property as we had intended, or if there's an option to give us an allowance to continue under the Lynn County Code and ordinances for a set period of time. Basically, if I can't ensure that my family's investments and assets are protected, I mean, we're prepared to continue to contest this annexation.
Any other comments for council? Thank you, Amanda. Okay, so that'll close the public forum segment of our agenda, and we'll move on to the consent agenda. Councilmember Sterned?
Mayor Pro Tem, I move to approve the consent agenda as follows. This will be items A-one through E-eight. This is going to be including resolutions three one one zero six to three one 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 two, three one 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 eight to three one 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 nine, and three one one two one to three one one two eight. Resolutions? Resolutions three one 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 three through three one 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 seven are being removed from the agenda, and resolution three one one two zero will be considered separately.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda, as noted by Mr. Sterned, items A-one through E-eight, with the exceptions being removed and/or considered separately. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Consent agenda carries.
Mayor Pro Tem, I move to approve resolution number three one one two zero, approving the well-being services agreement with the Cedar Rapids Metropolitan Area YMCA, and authorizing payment in the amount of thirteen thousand, two hundred dollars.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve resolution number three one one two zero, approving the well-being services agreement with the Cedar Rapids Metropolitan Area YMCA, and authorizing payment in the amount of thirteen thousand, two hundred dollars. Any discussion?
Your Honor, as an employee of the YMCA, I'll be abstaining from this vote.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion on this item? Very good. All those in favor of resolution number three one one two zero, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? And one abstention. Motion carries.
Your Honor, I move to approve project calendar regarding the Indian Creek Trunk Sewer, segment seven. Project is follows: resolutions three one one two nine through three one one three nine.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the project calendar regarding the Indian Creek Trunk Sewer Segment Seven Project, as follows: resolutions number three one one two nine through three one one three one. And I think we'll, Mr. Barkalow? We'll entertain questions.
Quickly go over the project. So this is the long-awaited segment eleven, or segment seven of the trunk sewer project that goes down to the wastewater treatment plant. It basically goes from Menards down to the Mount Cowery Cemetery, within the city of Marion. A lot of it through the Bajorance and Atlas property. Also goes through Folks Heritage Woods and Riley Trust. The engineer's estimate is ten point three million and change. Bids would be due February fourteenth of twenty-three with a completion date of nine fifteen of twenty-four, with five hundred day, five hundred dollars per day in liquidated damages. Staff did get the plans today, and we're going to be making some changes before we release the plans, but those will be released very soon. Get it out on the market to get some bids back.
Any questions for my? Mike, I do have one question. Thinking back many meetings at this point, we've already obtained all the easements necessary for this work?
Correct. All easements have been acquired. There's a couple permits that are outstanding yet, but they are in process.
Okay. All right. Anything else? All right. All those in favor to approve the project calendar regarding the Indian Creek Trunk Sewer Segment Seven, resolutions three one one two nine through three one one three one, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mike.
Mayor Pro Tem, I move to approve project calendar regarding the two thousand and twenty-three HMA resurfacing project as follows. It will include resolution numbers three one one three two through three one one three four.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the project calendar regarding the two thousand and twenty-three HMA resurfacing project, including resolutions number three one one three two through three one one three four. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the two thousand and twenty-three HMA resurfacing project, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Mayor Pro Tem, I move to approve the project calendar regarding the two thousand and twenty-three sidewalk ramp project as follows: resolutions three one one three five through three one one three seven.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the project calendar regarding the two thousand and twenty-three sidewalk ramp project, including resolutions number three one one three five through three one one three seven. Any questions or discussion, please? Very well. All those in favor of the project calendar regarding the two thousand and twenty-three sidewalk ramp project, resolutions three one one three five through three one one three seven, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tem, I move to approve project calendar regarding the ten ninety-five Sixth Avenue Site Disposal Project as follows: resolutions three one one three eight to three one one four zero.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the project calendar regarding the ten ninety-five Sixth Avenue Site Disposal Project, including resolutions number three one one three eight through three one one four zero. Any questions? You know, Mike, with the detail you're providing in your slides, you take away all my questions, it seems anymore. Thank you. All right, it's been moved and seconded to approve the ten ninety-five Sixth Avenue Site Disposal Project, resolutions as previously noted. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, we now move into a public hearing. Call the public hearing to order. This is regarding the two thousand and twenty-three Storm Sewer Project, and a short presentation. Mr. Barkalow?
Yes, Your Honor. So we're only showing four of the bids, and these are the total bids on the PowerPoint in the council packet that's available for the public to view, or on the engineering website. Under bid opportunities, the bid tab is there as well. There were nine bidders, and it has a detailed list of all the items and the bid amounts that everybody put in there for this project. The low bidder was Ralston Construction at a hundred and twenty-eight thousand, one hundred and eighty dollars and fifty-five cents, which was ninety-five percent of engineer's estimate. I don't have the construction dates on the slide, but it has, I'll have to look it up. So it has a commencement date of August fourteenth of twenty-three, and thirty working days, and liquidated damages, and the amount of three hundred dollars per day for work not completed within that time period. So we are recommending proceeding with this contract.
Very good. Is there anybody here to address council regarding this two thousand and twenty-three Storm Sewer Project? Has there been any correspondence received regarding this?
I have not received anything.
Nor has my office.
Okay. All right. With that, then, we'll close the public hearing and move on to the resolution. Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tem, I move to approve resolution number three one one four one, accepting bids and awarding the contract to Ralston Construction Incorporated regarding the two thousand and twenty-three Storm Sewer Project in the amount of one hundred and twenty-eight thousand, one hundred and eighty dollars and fifty-five cents.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve resolution number three one one four one, accepting bids and awarding contract to Ralston Construction Incorporated regarding the two thousand and twenty-three sewer project in the amount of one hundred and twenty-eight thousand, one hundred and eighty dollars and fifty-five cents. All those in favor of resolution number three one one four, I'm sorry, four one, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, we are now entering a public comment period regarding the request for an additional streetlight on Thirty-Fifth Avenue and additional speed limit signs.
Yes, Your Honor. So in the packet, and it was also mailed out to all the residents that sent in the petition, their request was additional streetlights and speed limit signs to be placed on the road. The tack memo has two recommendations in it, one of which is to move the existing light shown here. So the intersection of Thirty-Fifth Avenue used to be farther to the south when it was a gravel road, and so the light at that time is at the intersection of Lennon and Thirty-Fifth Old, where it used to be. So we recommend moving that light to the actual intersection. The rest of the lights, they're kind of hard to see, but they're the yellow dots. So per city of Marion regulations that we've established, we put them at all intersections, and at a spacing of six hundred feet on residential streets. And then, most of our streets do not have speed limit signs on them. It's twenty-five miles per hour unless otherwise noticed, and then you would have to have a speed placard up there. And so then the other recommendation is to have targeted enforcement. We can't put the speed trailers out there because they don't work well in the wintertime, so officers can actually sit out there and issue citations for those exceeding the speed limit. So those are the two recommendations that follow this. So this item is then for the public to comment, and we have a few comments that we'll go over. We received the one earlier already tonight, and then we'll receive and file the tack report, and then there's direction of council giving staff direction to move forward.
Okay. What comments have we received from the public on this, Rachel?
We received four comments in advance of the meeting. First one's from Janet and William Spratt. They're in support of the measure. Next is from Barb Ettenburn. Once more lights installed instead of only moving a light. Nancy Lochner, similarly, once more lights installed instead of only moving a light. And then Kim Schmidt would like speed limit signs and additional lights.
Okay. Has there been any other correspondence received?
No, you've received all of them. No, we have.
Right. Is there anybody, any, anything else that has come in or needs to be commented on at this point? Okay, we'll conclude the comment period on this item and move to the resolution.
Your Honor, I move to receive and file the Traffic Advisory Committee report regarding a request for an additional streetlight on Thirty-Fifth Avenue and additional speed limit signs. Anne Lentz, two nine one six, Thirty-Fifth Ave.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to receive and file the Traffic Advisory Committee tack report regarding request for additional streetlight on Thirty-Fifth Avenue and additional speed limit signs. And this was tendered by Anne Lentz at twenty-nine sixteen Thirty-Fifth Avenue. Discussion or questions?
Yes.
I just want to make sure I have clarification. Mike, what is the distance then from the proposed, where it is today, to where it would be? Would it, it's clearly under six hundred feet, is that correct?
Yeah, so all we're doing is, the lights along Thirty-Fifth Avenue now are within the six hundred foot that we'd put on all residential streets. As you may or may not know, we've had residents that want more lights. We have residents that want less lights because of light pollution. So six hundred is kind of the happy medium. It's not going to blanket the street, so it looks like a runway, but it's enough that there's lights out there. This light moving it north, I'm going to say it's about fifty feet. It does get it closer to Thirty-Fifth Avenue and does provide more light where it's supposed to be. And we've already talked to a line about that. They're willing to, because we did that road relocation, move that light at no cost. Otherwise, the rest of the lights are spaced per our current city of Marion standard.
Thank you for that. I'll just kind of follow up with a couple comments. So it does stay more standard to our lighting the intersections by moving feet, fifty feet, obviously keeps us in compliance with our own persistent rules. The other thing I would like to make note is, is providing it goes forward, and even not, I do want to acknowledge and appreciate our utility companies working with us to take down that endeavor to disassemble and relocate and reassemble at no charge to the city is a wonderful gesture on their part. So I just want to make that noted for the record that we do appreciate our utilities working with our municipality on that effort. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? I would have to express at least some empathy with the concern about the school-related traffic. I live probably a thousand feet from this particular intersection, and I've noticed the great increase of school-related traffic, day in and day out. That's heading to Boulder Peak, I think it is. So I just want to offer that and understand the sensitivity that that neighborhood would have relative to the traffic burden. Okay, any other questions or discussions? All right. All those in favor of receiving and filing the Traffic Advisory Report regarding a request for additional streetlight on Thirty-Fifth Avenue and additional speed limit signs, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Motion carries.
Mayor Pro Tem, I'd like to make a motion directing staff to proceed with moving the light pole closer to the Thirty-Fifth Avenue and Lennon Lane intersection and perform targeted police enforcement in the neighborhood as recommended by the Traffic Advisory Committee.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve a motion directing staff to proceed with moving the light pole closer to Thirty-Fifth Avenue and Lennon Lane intersection, and perform targeted police enforcement in the neighborhood as recommended by the Traffic Advisory Committee. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of this motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Mayor Pro Tem, I move to receive and file tack advisory committee, Traffic Advisory Committee report regarding setting the speed limit on Furnell Road. This is from the staff.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to receive and file the Traffic Advisory Committee report regarding setting speed limit on Furnell Road. This is from the staff. Discussion or questions? What is, Mike, a question I have is, what's, that speed limit, has it been determined?
So the current speed limit is fifty-five. When it was a gravel road, we're proposing thirty-five.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? All those in favor of receiving and filing the Traffic Advisory Report regarding the setting the speed limit on Furnell Road, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Your Honor, I move to approve ordinance number twenty-three dash zero one, amending chapter sixty-three of the Code of Ordinances, establishing the speed limit on Furnell Road from Fields Drive to Highway thirteen as thirty-five miles per hour. Initial consideration.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve ordinance number twenty-three dash zero one, amending chapter sixty-three of the Code of Ordinances, establishing the speed limit on Furnell Road from Fields Drive to Highway thirteen as thirty-five miles per hour. Initial consideration. Questions or comments? I should have just read this item, and I could have answered my question. Mr. Barkalow? I should have just read this item and I could have answered my question, Mr. Barkalow. All those in favor of this. Ordinance amendment, please say aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Mayor Protem, I move to receive and file the traffic advisory committee tack report regarding a request to convert the intersection of Twenty-Second Street. And Fifth Avenue to a four-way stop control submitted by staff.
It's been moved and seconded to receive and file. The traffic advisory committee report regarding a request to convert the intersection of Twenty-Second Street and Fifth Avenue. To a four-way control stop. This is from staff. Discussion. Hearing none? All those in favor of receiving and file the traffic advisory report regarding the request to convert the intersection of Twenty-Second. Street and Fifth Avenue to a four-way stop, please say aye. Motion carries.
Your Honor, I move to approve resolution number three one one four two, approving stop signs stopping eastbound and westbound Fifth Avenue traffic. At the Twenty-Second Street intersection.
It's been moved and seconded to approve resolution number three eleven four two, approving stop signs stopping eastbound. And westbound traffic, westbound Fifth Avenue traffic at the Twenty-Second Street intersection. Any questions or discussion?
I just wanted to bring it up. From the discussion that we had on Tuesday, we researched the illuminated sign versus just the regular stop sign. So the, the one on the, the left on the PowerPoint is, I assume, the original one that Councilman Brandt was referring to. This is where the, the lights are actually embedded in the stop sign. Those run about two thousand dollars apiece. So that is an option that council can consider if they want to move forward with just that. The other option is on the right, we have those on, on hand already from the Echo Hill and Albernat Road intersection. So if you recall, that used to be a two-way stop control when it went to four-way because of the school district before we've got the roundabout in. We had the flashing light. So that stop sign that you see there is actually from that intersection. In this case, the red light would be right over the stop sign. And so you'd have a red bulb flashing, whether you feel that is adequate enough. And also add the red flags. So that's just up for discussion. If you feel that what we have on hand to add to the existing. It's gonna take about ten minutes for public service to install that. And obviously we'll have to make sure the batteries are working if we had to order new batteries or something. For the solar panels, just because they haven't been in use for a little while. Maybe they went bad sitting in storage, but.
Yeah, well. Uh, thank you for that, Mike. I appreciate you looking into that. And I, I'm, obviously it was my idea to do that and I'm happy with. Using what we already have, same concept as the, the other type that I was talking about, so. If. What's the word I'm looking for?
A motion to amend.
Thank you. Do we need to amend this at all to, to have those put up or can just stop signs going in and you just have those added to the top of the stop sign? Do we even need to? That was make an amendment to that?
Mike, you're gonna be my question.
So if you're not changing the resolution, so you're still putting in the stop signs, then. I think, Mike, do you typically include what type of stop signs they are in your resolutions? And say, I think you can just direct staff to use those with. Yeah, we, we can have the direction.
Okay.
Is that an amendment or not?
No, no, you would, you would only need to amend if you're changing, if you're not going to approve the stop signs. Or if you wanted to make a change of, of where the stop signs were, but the motion would be the same. I just wanted to make sure we're consistent. I don't recall Mike putting any specificities, but.
Just like there's different size stop signs depending on the speed as well. We don't specify that in there as well.
No, just to follow up, I assume then the all-way signs get put on all the directions then. Just, is there a way maybe on the Twenty-Second Street stop signs that flags could go up while these are up? Just more.
I assume public services plenty.
Those are probably easy to do also, I would assume. Okay, thank you.
And then I would recommend about six months and then we take the light off just so it's, they get used to the regular stop sign.
Oh, that was my point. I was just gonna say, should we, should we, you know, continue with the direction to say for a period of six months? For the record, I didn't know if we needed to make note of that or not.
I'll include it in the minutes. I'll include it in the minutes.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else on that? So in approving this motion or this resolution, then that is inclusive of a direction to. Include these, these lights on the appropriate signs and for a duration of nominally six months. Somewhat as, as a training device in order to acquaint people with this alteration. Okay, anything else? All right. So with that, all those in favor of resolution number three one one four two, approving stop signs stopping eastbound and westbound. Fifth Avenue traffic at the Twenty-Second Street intersection, please say aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Mayor Protem, I move to approve resolution number three one one zero three. Approving a contract with Renderneck Associates, Inc. for the Central Plaza Project as a construction manager at risk with a guaranteed maximum price. And this was removed from the agenda one five twenty-three.
It's been moved and seconded to approve resolution number three one one oh three, approving a contract with Renderneck Associates Incorporated. For the Central Plaza Project as a construction manager at risk with a guaranteed maximum price. And this was removed from the agenda on one five twenty-three. Any discussion? Any questions? Very good.
I'll just highlight for the public and for city council that with this, the guaranteed maximum price is not included. So what they will do is they will work with RDG, get us to the construction documents. Then we will come back and do an amendment to this to add the guaranteed maximum price. And at that time, we will also do incentive disincentive. In that contract as well with the timeline, once we get all the final construction documents, because it doesn't make sense to do that until you know exactly what you're building. So we'll take it from the design development plans that are where we're at currently. We've already notified RDG that should this approve tonight to start that process. And get the construction documents started so that we can get this bid and constructed.
Okay, questions about that? Yeah, Will.
What's the timeframe on that?
Originally, it was this construction season that they would be done. So.
I mean, the, you said that you'd come back to council with the, with that number. That's what I mean.
It just depends. So we'll still have steering and technical committees, just like we did before as we went through the DD plan. So it just depends on how complex we get. How much we value engineer. So there's not a set timeline. It's just, we want to make sure we have the right product going into it.
Any other questions? All right, very good. I, I like this approach and I like the detail really pinning down the technicalities to drive, to set the price maximum. That, that will help with the overall project performance. Okay. All those in favor of resolution number three one one zero three, approving a contract with Rendernick Associates for the Central Plaza Project. As the construction manager at risk, please say aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Mayor Protem, I move to remove. Front table resolution number three one one zero five regarding annexation request from Fraser Land Investments LLC, tabled one five twenty-three.
Been moved and seconded to approve, to remove from table resolution number thirty-one one oh five regarding annexation request. From Fraser Land Investments LLC, tabled on one five twenty-three. Discussion. All those in favor of removing from table resolution number three one one zero five, please say aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Mayor Protem, I move to approve resolution number three one one zero five, approving annexation request from Fraser Land Investments LLC. At all for property west of Mulberry Drive, north of East Robbins Road, Marion, Iowa. This was tabled on one five twenty-three.
It's been moved and seconded to approve resolution number three one one oh five, approving annexation request from Fraser Land Investments LLC. At all for property west of Mulberry Drive, north of East Robbins Road, Marion, Iowa. Discussion. Yeah, Steve.
Yeah, Amanda brought up a question earlier and I think we ought to at least have a comment on record regarding this. I think her question was, I know she's had a lot of discussions with staff already and I appreciate that, but. Her specific question that I heard earlier that I think we should respond to is can the area where she lives be rezoned? To accommodate what they're doing. So I think we should at least respond to that comment.
Yes. My conversations with Ms. Madison has been that ag zoning would allow the use, but it's not. It would be spot zoning. It's not, I mean, it doesn't meet the size requirements for the ag district. None of the structures would set back requirements for the district, essentially take a code amendment to allow. The, the size and the, and the setbacks required of the entire district. So it's. It's, it wouldn't be a recommended option from staff.
So it's something that can be done, but it'd be extremely unusual and probably not accommodate all the zoning that would surround it.
Correct. And then with ag, I mean, it would, it would, you know. Any other relief from setbacks and whatnot for any future structures of that would go to the zoning board of adjustment too. And so. It would be, and I feel like an ongoing request for alternatives.
A lot of, lot of what-ifs and a lot of hoops to get through that there's too many steps down the road. Potentially just making it very, very challenging to, to accommodate.
Correct. And there is, is some future relief for, for setbacks of, you know, a proposed building that they had wanted. But again, that, that's not a guarantee that staff can make at this time.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? A question I, I have, in that alternate scenario that, that Steve just was talking with you about Kesha. Who are the stakeholders that would be involved in that in terms of the authorizing bodies besides city council? With planning and zoning?
Yes.
Board of Adjustment, anybody?
If it's a, if it's a rezoning to agricultural. It'd be, you know, it, it naturally goes to city council as far as variances to. If they would want to alter the. It wouldn't be in conformance with the, with the zoning code to, to zone it that way.
Well, I think what you're saying is, is that there's multiple stakeholders that would need to engage in the consideration of the specifics. In order to make that a reality, right? I mean, I'm just trying to draw it up to the, the simplest description. Okay, that, that's important to know. Any other questions on this? All right. All those in favor of resolution number three one one oh five, approving annexation requests from Fraser Land Investments LLC. At all for property west of Mulberry Drive, north of East Robbins Road, Marion, Iowa. Please say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, we're at a point, I don't see anything marked for other department discussion. At this time, we'll open it up for a general public forum on any comments that are appropriate at this time. Council won't take action at this point, but it may inform forthcoming activities. So any public comments at this time? Okay, very good. Thank you. All right, council comments and I'll start. To council member Atkins occupying my former chair.
I got nothing.
Mr. Johnson.
Uh, yeah, I've, I've had the, the pleasure of attending two enjoyable events in the past week. One was last week where the Gazette had their one hundred and fortieth anniversary and saw Gage there. So that was a very, very nice event. And the other one was actually right before I came here where. There was a biz mix at NRG and you might not know it by that name, but what they are is four different radio stations. Like fifteen forty AM, one oh eight FM and one oh five seven, which is actually my favorite radio station. So I had a good time going there and meeting some of the DJs I listened to all the time. And so now I could actually put a face. With some of those names, kind of saw where they do their work. Very nice facility. And I think the other comment to make is. They used to be located in Waterloo and just moved to Hiawatha a couple of years ago. So very nice facility anyways. On a personal level. That was fun for me.
Very good. Yeah, Will.
Was that big band radio? Is that what you're listening to? Um, I don't think I have anything today.
Oh, no, you said enough, really.
Brian, shout out again to your team for getting these roads cleared up. I was out early this morning and. It was, things were looking great for the big heavy wet snow we had. So thanks again. It does not go unnoticed, all that we do. And just a reminder of the Saturday council hours. And I kicked that off a couple of weeks ago. I know the mayor was there this last week, but it's fun to see folks. So don't forget accessible. City council chat about those items on your mind. Saturday mornings at the library, nine to eleven.
Very good. What, one oh, one oh five point seven, is that the station?
Oldies but goodies.
Oh, I'm suppressing so many comments at this point. Yeah, I am, I am, I'm older. No, I do, I just want to echo Ryan to your, your team, the streets getting, getting everything cleaned up from this morning. That was some thick, heavy snow. So appreciate that quick action. I just, I'm just continued just to be astounded at the number of things that are going on and the engagement of. Not only city employees, but our residents and the activities that are going on. And at the, at the library last weekend. The mayor and I received some, some nice compliments about the work that everybody's doing. We, there were some people from Cedar Rapids that were visiting and Bill, they, they acknowledged they came in the doors. Because they just had to see the library, okay? And when they went out, they had their kids with, they were astounded. So kudos to you and, you and your staff for operating the new facility in such a fine fashion. With that, I think we will adjourn from open session. However, we're destined to go into closed session. So I'll take that motion.
Mayor Protem and everyone here, I am happy to start the meeting and I will move us to an adjournment. Mayor Protem, I move to adjourn to closed session regarding litigation as permitted under sections twenty-one point five one C of the Code of Iowa.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to adjourn to closed session regarding litigation as permitted under section twenty-one point five one C. Of the Code of Iowa. Kara, can we have your legal statement, please?
Thank you, your honor. I have reviewed the proposed subject matter for the closed session and find the same to be appropriate under Iowa Code such twenty-one point five one C.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Ms. Atkins?
Yes.
Mr. Jensen?
Yes.
Mr. Harper?
Yes.
Mr. Brandt?
Yes.
Ms. Menzer?
Yes.
Mr. Sternet?
Yes. We are adjourned to closed session. Thank you, everyone.